Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Eber.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. We have your report.
The agenda for the February 26, 2013 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, February 21, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you today is a public hearing, the first item, Director of Community Development regarding proposed Tropico Apartments, development to be located at 435 West Los Feliz Boulevard. One A is motion approving stage one design review, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. We have the tandem project for a previous approval that you had the Triangle Project. This would sit, this project that's being proposed, six stories, 238 units, would sit across, really across this gateway into the southern part of the city. And it's something that's been long anticipated, this being the stage one consideration, primarily looking at some of the, the massing and the bulk of the overall project. What we are asking for today, and our senior planner Jeff Hamilton will come up and give you the details, is for your general consideration at that stage one level, recognizing we would come back for a stage two review at some point in the future for the design specifics. Jeff?
I'll open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. The project is the Tropico Apartment Project located at 435 West Los Feliz, within the industrial, commercial, residential mixed-use zone of the San Fernando Road redevelopment project area. The site is just over 91,000 square feet in area and is bounded by Los Feliz Boulevard, Gardena Avenue, Fernando Court, and on the west by the railroad tracks. Currently, the site is vacant. Site has received entitlements for two previous projects, most recent of which in 2008 was for an all-commercial development, an all-commercial and office development of 175,749 square feet. This had a grocery store, a day spa, restaurants, retail, and medical offices as well as a five-story parking structure. This was approved in December 2008. Those entitlements, all the entitlements for that project have since expired. But as a, as part of that project, there was an EIR prepared, and it was adopted by this council along with a statement of overriding considerations for certain environmental impacts.
It wasn't, it wasn't adopted by this council, it was adopted by prior councils.
By a council.
By a council.
By a prior council.
Thank you.
This project, the one before you today, is a six-story, 238-unit multifamily building. It is not a mixed-use project, it is all residential. The apartment building is at the corner of Fernando, Los Feliz, and Gardena. Just to the west, nearer the railroad tracks, is the six, a five-story parking structure with 279 parking spaces. The applicant has also made application for a conditional use permit, which is required in this zone for an all-residential project, and multiple sign variances will also be considered at a future time by this council. The maximum allowed density by right for the project is 225 units, but because the applicant is proposing 13 additional units, a total of 238, 12 of which would be affordable, the project qualifies for density bonuses under the city's density bonus ordinance, which is an implementation of state law. Under that ordinance, because at least 5% of the project is affordable to very low-income households, a density bonus of 20% is allowed, which allows up to 270 units on the project. Again, only 238 are proposed. The project also qualifies for reduced parking ratio, which is also provided under the density bonus provisions. Normally, we would require two parking spaces per unit for this project, but there's a decreasing ratio based on the size of the unit, so they're only required to provide 279 spaces. The project also qualifies for one incentive. The applicant is requesting that the city allow parking in an above-ground structure where ordinarily a below-ground structure would be required for a project of this size and density. Formal consideration of this and the other requests will occur before the council consideration, or as part of the council consideration of the stage two design submitted. At this time, I'd like to turn the dais over to Dale Kim, representing the project applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. Thank you for allowing us to present our case, the Tropico, this afternoon. Today, I'd like to present to you our project located at 435 West Los Feliz Boulevard. It is called the Tropico in recognition of the fact that that part of Glendale has been referred to historically as the Tropico. Our project is a 238-unit apartment project. There is no retail component in this project now, whereas the prior project was all-commercial project. However, there are ample nearby shopping amenities within the walking distance of this project, consisting of the Costco Power Center on the west side, and we have the Von's Grocery Store, and the Glendale Memorial Hospital is to the east side of us, and the, as pointed out, the Triangle Project is also nearby, our project. And importantly, our project is next to the Zerion Transportation Center, which we think will be a good amenity for our project, as it will encourage the use of the mass transit, the rail transportation. As you can see with this aerial view, our site is surrounded by those amenities that I just described, and it's a unique site in that it's a, it's bounded by a railroad track right next to us, and it is currently in a very industrial part of Glendale, with industrial developments all around us at this point in time. And it's also within five-minute walk of the MetroLink station, the Zerion Transportation Center. I walked, I took a leisurely stroll and it came out to about five minutes to walk to that train station. So the residents of the Tropico will be able to go to that station by way of walking or bicycling to go to downtown Los Angeles, or other parts of the greater LA County, or San Diego, or Santa Barbara, very easily from that location. This is a more close-up side of our project site as it is currently right now. It is completely vacant, of all buildings having been demolished, and as you can see, you can see the railroad tracks, and you can see the bridge as you come in from the Atwater side part of Los Angeles, coming into our project, Glendale, city of Glendale. And there's an embankment because of the bridge condition. So the project site sits on approximately about 14 to 15 feet of elevated condition vis-à-vis the Los Feliz Boulevard. So it's not very easy to have an access from that part of the four sides surrounding our site. However, as you can see, it is a very first site that you would see as you come into Glendale from Los Angeles side, where the very first building on the left-hand side, and it's a prominent site, so it really is a gateway project as you come into the city of Glendale, or as you leave the city of Glendale. So it's very important, we think, that this gateway site is developed appropriately with a good development that will give a good impression as you come into or leave the city of Glendale. This shows our project, which was approved previously, and this was the 170,000 square foot all-commercial project. It was approved for a market, spa, various restaurants and retail uses, and medical office uses previously. As you can see from this rendering, you can see that there was an entrance into the project from the Los Feliz Boulevard site at that, at that time, and it was approved for that condition when that project was approved. And this was obviously done to accommodate the traffic into the shopping center's parking structure. However, our project, being an all-residential project, will not require that entrance anymore. We're going to have our entrance only from the Fernando Court side, on the other side of that site near the railroad terminus. As a comparison, this project's traffic study showed daily traffic generation of 7,933 daily trips. By comparison, our all-residential project, as designed right now, has only 1,428 daily trips, resulting in over 80% reduction in daily trips from this change in the project This is our site plan, and let's go to the next site plan that shows the site plan with some landscaping overlay. As you can see, the project is laid out with the apartment structure right here, six-story apartment structure, and then a parking structure right here with the rooftop amenities. The project is organized in this way because of the fact that we have a condition where we have a 20-foot easement basically bisecting our property right down the line. It's a county flood control district easement for the storm drain system that traverses our property into the Los Feliz Boulevard. And so you cannot build a permanent structure over that, therefore you cannot have a parking structure over that condition. So what we have here is, they will allow us to build adjoining bridges so that the tenants can walk across the bridge into the apartment structure. So we can build the bridges across them, and we can also do hardscaping and landscaping in that 20-foot void right there at this point. So that dictates how our project is going to be situated. So you'll have the residential area here, and you'll have the parking structure area here. So that's what that, the reason for that is. Also, by virtue of having a parking structure on the western side of it, and they front the entire side of that property along the railroad side, we've determined that any kind of noise or frictional issues that arise from the train will be minimized such that we will be able to meet all of the code requirements in terms of sound issues. The nearest apartment unit right here would be about 200, 200 feet away from the railroad track, and our sound engineer has determined that any noise or friction will not be a problem by locating the parking structure on the western side of the project. So that's what dictates our project's design, as you can see here. This land right here, as you can see, is that embankment area, and it's right now a very drabby concrete finish right now. And what we're going to do is we're going to landscape it, hardscape it, and tie it into our project so that whole site looks like it's all part of one development as you go in and out of the Glendale area. As you can see, we have located all of our amenities on the rooftop. We have certainly a courtyard here, but we also have pool on this roof deck, jacuzzi, for the tenants to enjoy, and we have a fitness room here, and we have the media room, event room, and all these things. We've located them on, on top of the parking structure because we think that tenants will be able to enjoy great spectacular view of the skyline of the LA downtown area, and also the mountain view on that side of the Griffith Park. So I believe, all in all, our project is in excellent use of this very unique site. Our project cost going forward is going to be about $35 million. Dr. Cho, our principal owner of the applicant, has owned this land since 2008, and we believe that this project, at this point in time, is a good use of this site, and is a feasible project. And I want to add that this project will generate about $3.5 million worth of governmental fees that will have to be paid as part of the permitting process for things like development impact fees, school district fee, public guards fee, plant check fees, and building permit fees, and things, things of that nature. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn over to my architect, David Kim, to let him explain our design philosophy on this project.
Any questions? Mr. Manukian.
The west side is just a parking structure with the amenities on top?
Parking structure is on the west side, so that it is adjoining the railroad.
There are no apartments in that structure.
There will be no apartments in that structure, yes.
Okay. The next speaker is David Kim.
Thank you.
Followed by Aram Kazazian.
My name is David Kim. I'm the architect in charge of this exciting project. Thank you for having us today. In order to create a project best fit into this site, our team have worked with the planning staff in detail for design colors, styles, and materials in many of the design aspects of it. And all those design, project design analysis is very detailed, it's described in the staff report in front of you, so I'd like to make it very short, just by pointing just a few design elements of it. As you can see on that design, we definitely use a lot of design element to break down this six-story structure. It would appear to be really big and massive, but as you can see, we used the dark color of material on the base, so it's just working as a base, and then above, five-story is another mess. So articulation on the balconies and windows, and materials on the staircases, and the sum of design element at the corner breaks down the whole six-story mess down to more of a human scale. Yes, I cannot deny this is a big project, but there is a certain way we actually training, because this is gateway project, we try to give a certain impression to the people coming into and out of the Glendale, and we use some of this, the corner element as our landmark design. That corner element is consists of the metal panel, and some of them shiny, some of them are corrugated and then ribbed metal. It gives some, somewhat of industrial design element, which is context of surrounding area, the industrial area. That's what we have used. And very distinguished feature of this project is you can see on this small fins in here that is very unique. I just brought a, just sample of colored glass. So it is very unlikely used in some other project. By putting this colored glass on those, right next to the balconies, actually that will play, have some play with the morning and afternoon sun shining that, reflecting the colors into the project. It makes a very different, very active design feature as is. And we used some of, some industrial context element as well. At the corner of this building, there is a open staircase, consists of, made of steel structures exposed, that actually shows more of industrial context, so it goes with other buildings in the area. And very significant landscape features on this project is that somewhat of landscaping and the amenities on the rooftop. We have used, we located our amenities on the central courtyard, as well as on the top of the parking structure. So parking structure have pools and some of, you can see there. This is our central court on the, it has a barbecue garden, and we have a palm court, and some of the water feature, water garden at the central court. And then we do have between parking structure and the main residential building, that 20-foot of easement area, we made it a zen garden. So we made it for somewhat of water trickling features of zen garden, people enjoy it, and then we putting the heavy plants, I mean, thick plants of the bamboo trees, so it blocks the view to the parking structure. And we decided put the parking structure wall solid, so the residents on this side cannot hear any of the car noises, any fume of those comes to the residential side of it. And as I mentioned, the sky pool deck is located onto the, the west side of it, and then we do have a gym. We call it Vista Gym because it has a downtown view to, and it's located in the fifth floor. It would be really attractive feature for the project. And we, of course, we will follow all the California green code features as water-saving units and energies, recycle feature, all of those. On top of, we'll put some solar heating for pools, and we'll make it, this whole project is solar panel-ready to, in the future, so we can just put the solar panels. And also, we'll have electrical, electric vehicle charging station on each floor of the parking, so the people has electric vehicle have a good use for it. And of course, all the planting and landscaping will be done with the draw tolerance planting to save the water feature. So there's a lot to talk about this exciting project, but you can see all those details on the staff report. Oh, one thing I just want to make sure that, although you may notice this small, small entrance from the Los Village to our zen garden, because we believe that pedestrian access from those Los Village to the building will increase pedestrian traffic around the buildings, make it feel safer. So we introduced a corner of the building as our main access point to the zen garden as well. That's the brief summary of the design intent, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer it.
Any questions? I have a question. I see that you've landscaped the concrete extensively on Los Feliz, leading down to the road, and then you also have a pedestrian access in the middle of the...
Yes.
Yeah, so you can actually go shopping or...
To the Costco's.
Get into it. Big improvement. Okay, thank you. I don't hear any other questions. Next speaker is Aram Kazazian, followed by William Naraz. Aram Kazazian? He was here a minute ago. Okay. William Naraz, followed by Jerir Karoglian. We need your name for the record also.
Pardon me?
Give us your name for the record.
Yes. My name is William Naraz. I'm hospital administrator for Gateway Animal Hospital located at 431 West Los Feliz Road in Glendale. We're right across the street from the project that has been spoken to, 435, and we've been serving our community for, since 1950. I'm here representing the hospital, and Dr. Rafael Vilicana, who is the owner, and he's a doctor of veterinary medicine at Glendale, at Gateway Animal Hospital. We were very surprised when we received a letter indicating that this project was being considered, and the reason for our surprise was that we've seen a couple of projects that have been requested and declined, and one of our, our main concern, we don't want to impede or, or stop progress, our main concern is the traffic congestion. The prior, the prior projects had a lot of traffic problems that we could see, and this project is going to be serviced by two narrow streets, Fernando Court and Gardena. And our concern is that this project is much bigger than the other ones, and so consequently, we feel that the traffic will be even about tenfold of what we, what we would have on the other projects. And basically, we have congestion now, and we have people that drive their cars off of San Fernando Road onto Fernando Court, and try to make their way over to Gardena, make a left-hand turn, and speed over to Los Feliz Boulevard or Road to get onto the five or to wherever they're going. And the congestion is, is very, very heavy on San Fernando Road, as any of you might know. And so we feel that with all of the cars that will be located at the new project, it'll just increase, increase the jams that we'll have, the traffic that we'll have. And we feel that we will really suffer, our customers, our clients will suffer, because they will find that there's too much traffic for them to come and have their pets serviced at our hospital. So we don't know who did the study about traffic. As I say, we've been there since 1950. I've been there over 25 years, and no one has ever approached us as to traffic. No one has ever asked us any questions about the traffic. And if, if you have never been there, you ought to try it sometime. It's, it's kind of rough. And so, again, we're not against the project, we're just very concerned of what the, the project will do to the traffic. Excuse me for a moment. We just recently, just today, as a matter of fact, they're pouring the sidewalks. We just recently remodeled our entire hospital. We had a 3,000-square-foot hospital, now we have a 10,000-square hospital, and we spent well over a million dollars remodeling the hospital. And so consequently, we feel that it's going to increase our traffic, and although we have parking, we need off-street parking for our overflow. And I believe that the off-street parking is going to be taken away from us, and it's going to make it very rough on us. So I'm asking you to really consider the traffic. That's what we're concerned about. We don't want to impede progress, I'll repeat myself, just the traffic, okay? Any questions?
I have a quick question. That's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I'm a, well, I'm not a patient at your hospital. My pets are patients at your hospital, so...
They're a client?
I am a client of yours. I've been a client of yours for, for 13 years.
Right.
And a very happy client of yours.
Thank you.
Not to endorse this publicly, but you guys are great. I just have a question. You said that you preferred the previous projects, but the previous entitled project, according to their analysis, would cause 80% more traffic than this. Would you still prefer that project?
The previous one?
Right. The previous approved project would be 80, because it's retail, it's all retail, would be 80% more traffic.
No, we, we were not in favor of that either. We were not in favor because of the traffic, again.
With your build-out, did you add parking when you increased your building?
Yes, we do.
That's good. Good to know, as a customer.
We have parking that we rent on Fernando Court, and we have parking that we rent, that we have under the hospital, and we have parking that we rent across the street where the project is going.
On their lot?
On their lot. We pay them rent for their lot, yes.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Aram, thank you, sir. Aram Kazazian, followed by Mr. Karoglian.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero. My name is Aram Kazazian. You know, when I found out about this project, I had some concerns. I did some study on it. I mean, the design is just a really boxy design. It's not, nothing really special to me, but maybe some people like that. 238 units, 238 units comes to required parking, anywhere you build, 524 parking spaces. Just because they're adding 12 more units to, to the required, so they're entitled to reduce the parking down because they're going to build somewhere, get the density bonus, it doesn't make sense. A 2:1, a 2:2 parking space per unit gives you 476 plus guest parking, 48, 528. So we're dropping 528 down to 279 parking spaces. It's going to be devastating in this area. Number one, by the way, I have no interest in this area, I'm just looking at for the benefit of everybody. I also have pets go to the hospital there to, for the last 20 years or so. Now, I have another concern I have is you have electric vehicle charging, you have one on, one floor, one on the second floor. That's all we have. We have two electrical vehicles that people can take. It's not a charging station where you can charge multiple cars. There's only two, one on the, one floor, and one another one, so let's clarify that too. And the parking, let's clarify what gives them the right to reduce the parking without a parking reduction or a parking variance, which is the same name, you know, just different names, different thing. But what gives them the right to reduce the parking required from 524 to 279? Because they're adding more units, that gives them the right? It's really something wrong with this code then. Thank you very much, and I think we should look out for the neighborhood. This neighborhood, the street is very narrow, traffic is very heavy, I know it. If you ever get down there during the rush hour, you can't even get through. People cut in the back streets to get through, which is, because they can't even make a right turn on San Fernando, from San Fernando to Los Feliz, it's all blocked off. Thank you.
Gerard Karoglian. Gerard Coroglian.
My name is Jerai Coroglian. I'm the owner of Nova Automotive, located at 421 and 425 Fernando Court, Glendale, distributing auto parts from a 10,000-square-feet facility since 1991, so it's about 23 years. I have five major concerns. One, not enough parking for the tropical apartments. Two, additional traffic to Fernando Court and Gardena Street, impact on loading and parking on Fernando Court and Gardena Street. Three, financial impact. Four, tenant warning regarding the existing industrial zoning at Fernando Court and Gardena Street. Five, the palm trees on Fernando Court past the Gardena Street. Start with one, not enough parking. Businesses on the street currently use the street parking for loading and loading, yellow zones, employee overflow parking and visitor overflow parking, green zone. I know the proposed apartment is parked over code, but it's subject to give and take. But we, the businesses, are afraid that the overflow parking or guest parking from the apartments are going to take over the street parking. How can we be assured that the parking, the apartment parking, will not hurt our businesses? Will the businesses get permit parking for the street? You need to consider that seriously. The Tropical Project is proposing to build 238 units with a maximum allowed of 270 units, spread over 22 two-bedrooms, 143 one-bedroom, and 73 studios. By allocating, just being fair, by allocating two cars for the two bedrooms, one and a half car for the one-bedrooms, some have one car, some have two, and one car per studio, there will be a need for 331 parking spaces, not counting for the visitors' parking, which includes tenants, visitors, apartment managers and secretaries, vendors, landscape, pool workers, electricians, plumbers, and other maintenance crew. Therefore, there will be definitely enough overflow parking from the Tropical tenants onto Fernando Court and Gardena Street, taking overflow street parking from the patrons and employees of the existing businesses. I think the clerk has, the city clerk has passed those pictures. These are past and recent pictures, existing as now before the project. Additional traffic, as a solution, the existing business owners and tenants should have priority parking on the Fernando Court and Gardena Streets. Hence, a special parking permit should be issued for the business owners and tenants during the business hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday to Friday or Saturday. Also, the existing loading and unloading, the yellow zone, and customer parking, existing green zone, should be permanently kept for the business arguments. Two, additional traffic and impact on loading and loading. What will be the traffic pattern be into and out of the apartment complex and onto the San Fernando Road, Los Villas Streets? Will the development be required to install a light at Fernando Court and San Fernando Road, which is not existing now? We, the businesses, are concerned that currently, many days, current Fernando Court is jammed with parked cars and large 18-wheelers, loading and unloading with forklifts, right on the street, on the yellow zone. How will be, how will there, will there be a room for the 500 cars a day coming and going from the development? As of now, you see the pictures. Fernando Court is 34 feet wide, that's all. The rendering is a little bit misleading. I saw the rendering on Gardena, it shows four lanes. That's wrong. There's no four lanes. There's two lanes only for two-way street. On each, on the two lanes on both sides of the curb there, that's street parking. So, it looks it's wide, but it's not. That's Gardena. The worst is Fernando Court. We have 34 feet wide, that's all, from curb to curb. When a trailer is parked on one side of the curb, as you see, it takes 12 feet from the street width. If a car is parked on the opposite side of the curb, it will take an additional eight feet from the width of the street, thus leaving 14 feet for a two-way traffic, which is not enough, and creates a gridlock. As of now, we have gridlocks. So, just imagine with 500 cars coming in.
Okay, you'll have to wrap it up.
Do I have a three minutes? I'm sorry.
No, you had five.
I did five already?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then, the last one, I would just say that, I'm going to leave you this. On the previous project, we, the staff agreed, when it was condos, to sell it, we went, we want, we have, the staff agreed to add to the sellers or the buyers, to put a caveat warning that this is a zoning, industrial zoning, and you should be aware of that. We want the city to act, in order to curb down, tenants and new future complaints, the city council should require from the Tropical Apartment owners to add on their rental application forms and the lease agreement, a caveat in bold and big font. Tenant be aware that you will be residing in a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week business industrial zone, subject to noise, fumes, traffic congestion, truck trailers, and forklifts loading and unloading of the street. Last but not the least, we have an ambulance transmit right along Gardena, which has 20 to 30 ambulances. By code, by state law, every time they have to call for, go for an emergency call, they have to put the siren on for 15 to 30 seconds. Now, eventually...
All right, that's good. You made, you made, you made two points, we understand.
Eventually, those tenants are going to come and complain, and you guys are going to, they're going to ask you to close that business. Along with other businesses, there's a big crane company, you have seven cranes.
Okay, Mr. Coroglian.
Yeah, you have a lot of things that you have to, need to consider, but this is going to be a disaster for us.
Thank you for the photos. I have another card. Rodney Khan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan, and I'll try to stay within the five-minute timeframe. A few things that have been mentioned, I am a member of this project team, and a few things that I heard, I think I need to clarify. To start off with, this is a Stage One conceptual review only. I'll say that again, it's a Stage One conceptual review only. We are performing a subsequent EIR, and that document will analyze traffic, it will analyze parking, and it will analyze a number of other environmental aspects. We are not to that point yet. It was mentioned by some of the property owner adjacent, in that area, and I want to be very clear about this mixed-use area that has a residential zoning on the property, it's a residential overlay. Most of the businesses in that area, and most of the buildings in that area, were built many, many years ago, and they all have insufficient parking. They're parking on the streets, they're parking anywhere they can park, because they don't have sufficient onsite parking. It was mentioned about, will this project generate additional traffic? I think Councilmember Friedman pointed out, this project will actually reduce the amount of traffic and trips generated by almost 80%, as was pointed out by Dale. So, in terms of the preference, obviously residential generates far less traffic and far less trips than an industrial or commercial project does. There was mention about the parking. Once again, it's going to be studied. We implemented the Density Bonus Ordinance, which is a state law, SB 1818. And the main reason that we implemented that ordinance was so that the code requirement of having a subterranean or semi-subterranean parking condition for our project, we would be able to have an above-ground parking structure. And I think it was pointed out and mentioned very clearly, the reason being is we are directly adjacent to the railroad tracks. So, the noise, the vibration, the safety issues would all be addressed by putting that parking structure, as is pointed out, with no residential units in a separate building. So, that's why we did that. The Density Bonus Ordinance, once again, would allow us 270 units. We're not proposing 270 units. In order to implement the ordinance, you need to exceed the current density. So, what we did was, we took the current density, which is 225, we added one more unit to 226, so we would qualify, and in doing so, that triggered us requiring affordable units, 12. So, we just, that's where the number comes from, the 12 plus the 1. That's all. We're not trying to maximize anything. We were just trying to get that above-ground parking structure by right for this purpose. Our site has been vacant for many years, and it's already been pointed out, and I won't repeat how this is a gateway, and quite frankly, for a number of years, it was an eyesore on our city. It needed to be developed, the previous property owner had a plan, they lost it, they didn't move forward on it, and Dr. Cho came in and purchased this property. It's now, the structures have been demolished, you've been out there, or you've seen it, and right now, it's being used for parking, and it's being used for vehicle storage. This is not something, as a gateway project into our city, we'd like to see. Obviously, we'd like to see an improvement on that site. Hopefully, this is the improvement that we're going to see. I'll conclude my remarks. I said I'd stay within the timeframe. Thank you for your consideration. Our whole project team is here if you have further questions. Thank you very much.
I have a question. So, you triggered SB 1818, which for Mr. Kazazian and the others who asked, is a state law, not a city code.
That is correct.
Something that we cannot prevent from being triggered, even if we would want to, because we'd be breaking state law. So, you triggered that in order to get the above-ground parking. But if we gave you a variance for the above-ground parking, would you be willing to lower the density in that building?
Lowering the density by 13 units?
Well, I don't know. I'm just asking in general. If we wanted a less dense project, would it still be possible for you to reduce the number of units if we were to grant the variance for the above-ground parking, so that we could reduce some of the traffic impacts?
Right, I would go, I would like to say yes quickly, but what I would do is, I would consult with the owner.
Right. I understand you can't ask that right now.
Right, I can't, I can't answer that right now. The bottom line being, though, is, the reason we did that is because of the parking and the parking structure.
I understand, okay. And then, is there also a parking reduction, as Mr. Kazazian said? Is it underparked because of SB 1818? I was a little unclear about that.
Councilmember Friedman, it's not underparked. The code, the Density Bonus Ordinance, SB 1818, the way it's adopted, it says parking concessions. It's the code-required parking. So, for instance, in the staff report, it says 250 parking spaces are required by code. It is a code. We are providing 279. So, we actually exceed the code parking.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just so the record's clear, the parking require, the parking that you're providing is consistent with the Density Bonus Law?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Jerry?
Those were actually my thoughts exactly, that if you're, if you feel obligated to increase the number of units only to get the above-ground parking, perhaps there is a way to solve some of the problems that have been presented, that have been raised about the traffic and the flow around those streets, Fernando Court and Gardena. The above-ground parking just makes a lot of sense to me, regardless of how many, how few units you have, because it does serve as a buffer between the railroad and the, and the project itself. So, that's, that's something maybe, I know you're going to have some discussion on, and that's something I'd like to hear more about. So, traffic hasn't been, Traffic Department hasn't weighed in on these, some of these issues that have been raised.
Not at this point. That would come in at the Stage Two.
Okay.
So, understanding and respecting the comments that were received from the public, now is not the time, really, to get into the details of those particular items.
Okay. Are colors considered a detail?
That would come in as well as the Stage Two. We're really interested in the concept, the bulk, the massing.
Well, let's get the... I had a great point I was going to make.
Let's get the color chart up there.
Mr. Kazazian?
Artie, can you get to the color chart?
The, mainly that sign. I mean, to be honest, I don't like that sign.
Oh, you like it?
Because, because it reminds me of another retailer. Yes, hit it, hit it, Artie.
Oh.
I mean, look, the fonts are different, but the colors are all there. But I won't get into it, I'm not going to get into it too much more. I like the, I like the burnt orange color, I like the green. Generally, I prefer the more subdued tones. No, no, that's, that's okay, we, thank you, you're right on target. But we'll, as you said, that's a Phase Two, I'll, Stage Two, I'll, I won't get into that at this point. But my general, these are my general thoughts, let me just make that clear. I do think we're putting a lot of units in downtown, and although this is somewhat removed from the downtown, the issues such as traffic and circulation are a concern. I'm going to look closely at any sort of report that comes back from the Traffic Department on those impacts. I feel much more comfortable with ownership units. We're getting a lot of apartments in this city. There is certainly a role to play, there is a niche for apartments. Generally, I prefer to see a little bit more emphasis on the condo and the owners, ownership units at this point. As I said, the parking, above-ground parking, I think it just makes a lot of sense. It is a gateway to our city, so I do want to see really the best in terms of quality and design for that. And I am concerned that whatever we put there in form of residential, whether it's apartment or condos, many units or fewer units, that there be a compatibility with the neighboring uses. The ambulance, I mean, at this point, we thought that the train horns were the biggest nuisance, but if that ambulance company has to sound their sirens every time there's a call, or if the lumber company is unloading 24 hours a day with forklifts, I just want to make sure that we're not causing an inherent conflict between all these uses. I mean, I want everyone, when this is done, to be happy and to say, I'm glad that I'm at this location. It has great walkability to amenities, to the hospital, to the train station, to Costco, that's a big plus, to Atwater Village, and our whole San Fernando, and our B-lines are very nearby. So, those are all pluses for this project, but, you know, there's pluses and minuses in my mind.
Other comments?
What is the density per acre in this project? Does anyone know?
The density per acre in this project is up to 100 units per acre.
Mr. Weaver?
I'll respect my comments. Mr. Khan more or less stated what I was going to say. As an engineer, I'd be looking for the traffic study, it's not done, it comes in the next phase, Phase Two, the architectural design will be refined, working with staff. I presume that they're aware of the noise factor, and the windows will be, the kind of windows will double or triple pane to keep the sound out. I don't know if you're going to allow pets in the place, but you have a vet right across the street there, and it should increase the business to the animal hospital. It's a nice addition to the hospital, I've seen that. So, by no means we blessing it totally. We talked on the projects before that, the buffer zone of the parking structure to the west, vibration, everything will be taken out. I understand about the storm drain through there, it's no different than the Hilton Hotel that covers the Redugawash. The county has to have access to that at any time in case of an emergency. So, that pretty well constrains the space that you can understand. It didn't show on here, but all I saw was the increased width on the street in front of a structure where it's going to park the cul-de-sac, but it didn't show the rest of the block down, so I couldn't see how that configuration, going from a small to a wider, how that's going to be handled. I don't know where the, what the traffic study will show and what direction the traffic's going to come from, off of Los Villas or off of San Fernando Road. That's all, I'm waiting to see all of that, but there's just so much you can do with that. And as far as too many apartments in downtown Glendale... And as far as too many apartments in downtown Glendale, while this is not, the condo market is not in vogue right now, and a lot of the buildings, apartment structures going up are being built to the standards of condos, so condo conversions can take place in the future. The developers are aware of that. So when the market turns, you'll see apartments turning into condos. I don't know about this one. Could be. Just unfortunate, the City of LA is going to get the sales tax revenue from Costco, not the City of Glendale. That's, something's always got to be built on the border of the city. In this case, they'll benefit that way, but clients, you know, be able to walk down to Costco and not try to find a parking spot in Costco during the day, that'll be a big benefit to those people. So at this stage, I'm fine with it. That sky pool, whatever, up there, is going to have a terrific view, almost unheated to the northwest, the gym and everything will have a view clear down to almost Griffiths, Griffiths Park and the Observatory possibly. So you've got two great amenities up there that the people will come up and take advantage of. Any comments?
What is, what is the prior project that they alluded to? A condo project that was proposed before? Was there something like that?
It was a mixed-use project, about 175, almost 176,000 square feet.
Not, not the office project. Was, was it?
Mixed use, that was their previous?
It wasn't, it was a condo?
I think a long time ago there was a condo project that had been approved there.
It's the third iteration.
That's right.
Third iteration.
165-unit project, the very original project. That's the one you're asking about, right?
When was that?
2005.
2005. I, I, I'm generally not in favor of any additional housing, and I try to vote against it whenever I can. But today, it's, it's a stage one review, and I'll just hold off on, on final decision on this project. I have to say that I'm pleased that they're not building 270 units, they're building 238. It's, it's better than 270. If we can cut down the density even more with some of these suggestions, I would probably consider it. One, in terms of design, colors, shapes, I'm so qualified about expressing opinions on these, on these matters that I will, I will say a job well done. So I, I will support the stage one design today. However, with the environmental impact report, I want the issues that were raised by the neighbors and the, and the businesses around there, and looking at, you know, some of these pictures as it relates to traffic, and how the project is going to mitigate some of these issues that we see around there, I will be very interested in seeing how, how, how that's going to be done. So I will vote in favor of the stage one design today. And I will raise one issue, which, which is a general issue, not related to this project, where it does come up with this project, but it just, it's just an issue for me, and it's per Glendale Municipal Code Section 30, 36060, it says, because at least 5% of the units will be affordable to very low-income households, a density bonus of 20% is allowed. So they get 5% of affordable housing, and not them, but in general, and I'm talking generalities right now, and for that, they get 20% density bonus. That is not balanced, in my opinion. That's something, I don't know if it's state law, that is...
Is.
Is it?
It's a reflection of, of how much the developer has to write down the cost of the unit to get to very low versus moderate or low.
I, I understand, but it's just the amount.
But that's a state, that's a state law?
That's correct.
Yeah, the state.
It just, is there any way we can address it locally where that is not necessarily the case?
Not with respect to...
As a general...
Not to respect to the ratios.
Yeah, not with respect to the ratios for the density bonus. They're set by state law and we're preemptive.
So with 5% very low income, they get 20% bonus on the project?
Correct. And if that, if the percentage of affordability goes up between 5%, I think it's 11%, they get an additional 2.5% for every 1%.
Wonderful.
And that's, that's set in state law.
That's why some of, some of these laws, I understand that projects meet the code and all of that, but, and, and I, kudos to the project that's being presented today for not doing a 270 or 260, or doing 271 unit and asking for a variance for one unit, you know? I've seen that done before. But I'm pleased that they're not, they're not asking for the 270 units, but I'm very hesitant about the project. Again, today, it's just the design, and I'm fine with the design, but I, I will scrutinize much closely the traffic impacts to the neighboring businesses and the streets, so that's my opinion.
Mr. Friedman?
I'll just say I share the opinions of, most of the opinions of my colleagues. I think one of the gentlemen who came raised an interesting point about having, that to require them in their lease agreements, to warn people about being in an industrial zone. I don't know if we can mandate that, but I think that if we can, we should put that in there.
I'd have some concerns given the type of review we're talking about, design review, but we can look at it.
Okay, so we can't do that today, and we may not be able to do that at all.
In this zone, it's a CUP, is it not residential?
Yes, we could make that a condition of the conditional use permit.
Okay. I'd feel more comfortable with that. I think they're right that people need to be notified about what kind of a zone they're in and what might be happening around them. I am also very concerned about the traffic for this, not just this project, but really anything that goes in here, because it is a very problematic area. I mean, I go to that vet all the time, so I know what it's like to park around there and to drive around there. So what I would love to see is if any way they can reduce the density, I would look at very favorably. And recognizing, and people need to be aware that they have done that, they are not max, maxing out on what they can put in, in terms of what's allowable by code, and I appreciate that. But as they move forward, if there is a way they can bring that down even further, that would be something that I would love to see. I like the colors. Mr. Najarian and I can argue about that later. The only color, and, you know, it's such a small thing, I hate to even bring it up now, but it is a design review hearing as well. I just think that, that making things white or close to white tends to make things look larger, and since this is a fairly massive building, I would reconsider maybe some of those lighter elevations and put in something more neutral. The, one of the apartment buildings that's across this, very close to there, it's at Vassar City Lights, it's sort of a lot of neutral colors, and the building really disappears when you drive by it. So it's just something to think about. But yeah, I, I agree that when it comes back, I really am going to look very closely at the traffic mitigation and the parking, parking. Thank you.
Okay. I support the project. I was a little disappointed that the original commercial project didn't work, but this is a gateway to the City of Glendale as you come off of the 5 freeway, and I think what we have there now is just horrible. Fortunately, most people don't realize they're in Glendale. They think they're still in Los Angeles when they go under the, under the truck or out of the train. But now, as you come up Los Feliz to the right, you've got the Sealy Lofts, they've done a wonderful job readapting that building. There's another parcel there that's in play for more potential condos or apartments. So I think this really adds to the City of Glendale. What I particularly like about it is it's near the transportation center. You can absolutely take a train to downtown Los Angeles, to the airport, to the San Fernando Valley, and anywhere else that you want to go. There's Amtrak and all the rest of the train services, MTA. Of course, we also have our B-line that's focused there at the transportation center, and San Fernando Road and Los Feliz is a hub of transit. I mean, literally, on that corner, you can catch buses to take you all over Southern California. Some of them are rapid types of buses. So I also envision that a lot of people that are living here perhaps are going to work in the surrounding businesses, whether it's Costco that pays a living wage, or the hospital, or they will get on a bus or possibly the train and go to their employment. So I think we're in good shape. Now, the businesses surrounding this location are absolutely, I think, going to be impacted, but the reality is, they're basically all in situations that are completely obsolete. There is very little parking. I go to some of the businesses that have been there throughout the years, there's just very little parking. So I don't, I'm not completely convinced that by bringing this in strictly a residential project, that these other businesses and companies are going to be impacted. I just don't particularly think that's the case. These photos that you're, that were circulated shows a kind of impact that exists there. You've got trucks unloading right on the street, you've just got a mismatch of companies. So as the EIR is put together and the parking and, and circulation plan comes into effect, then I think we'll see, we'll see how it's going to shake out. But all in all, I think this is an excellent project for the cities, not the least of which is the fees that I believe were mentioned, close to $3 million, somewhere in that area. And the long-term use, we're trying to create housing near transportation centers, near employment centers, and this is absolutely what we're trying to accomplish in this zone. So I support the project.
Mayor, something you could do on the western, the west side of the parking structure, high up, where nobody in Glendale can see it, you could put a big neon sign saying, "Welcome to Glendale." Come onto the bridge, there it is up there. Just kidding, folks, just kidding, but nobody in Glendale's going to object.
Maybe a little neon sign. Well, and, and the, I'm also very happy that in fact the landscaping is going to extend down, because at this point, it's just strictly cement, and I think that's going to absolutely soften the entrance. Okay, so do I have a...
Did you close the public hearing?
Yeah, did you close it? And also make those, those documents submitted part of the record.
And all of the photos will be submitted as part of the record, and I assume that means it'll also, when the EIR is done and parking studies, it'll also be part of the record.
Then I'll move 1A.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Second item on this special meeting is also a public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding proposed Hampton Inn and Suites development to be located at 315 South Brand Boulevard. 2A is motion approving parking reduction from 94 to 88 spaces, subject to findings and conditions of approval. B is motion approving variance of one loading space, subject to findings and conditions of approval. C is motion approving combined stage one and two design review, subject to comments and conditions of approval. And D is motion approving instrument imposing covenants on real property.
Okay. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Conversely, to the previous report, this is actually stage one and two design review for a much anticipated project at the southwest corner of Brand and Colorado. But let me be very clear, this does not incorporate the existing strip center that is located immediately on that corner, but rather the commercial and hotel property that surrounds that corner. And to give you the details on that, Eric Kraus, one of our other senior planners, is going to be giving you the presentation. Eric?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The proposed project is located at 315 South Brand Boulevard. It's near the southwest corner of Brand in Colorado. The Atkins is requesting a parking reduction, standards variance, and final stage one and two approval for a new 94-room hotel with 88 parking spaces located in the downtown specific plan in the transitional district. The project site is 21,432 square feet, is currently developed with a vacant restaurant building and service parking lot. As you can see, the project is an L-shaped lot, and it wraps around the property at the southwest corner of Brand, excuse me, in Colorado, resulting in narrow fringes both along Colorado and Brand Boulevard. The project site is proposed at five stories, the height of 70 feet. The code required parking for the project is 94 spaces, which is one parking space per room, and the project will provide 88 parking spaces, requiring approval of a parking reduction permit for a six-space shortfall. Parking for the project will be provided in a one-level subterranean parking garage and at the first floor level. The access to the subterranean parking will be from a single driveway on Brand Boulevard, and the access to the first floor parking will be from a single driveway on Colorado Street. The two parking levels are not connected internally, and so cars entering the Colorado driveway would have to exit on Colorado, and cars entering Brand Boulevard driveway would have to exit on Brand as well. The project is required to provide one loading space, and because none is proposed, they would require approval of a variance for not providing the one loading space. The transitional district of the downtown specific plan permits by right a maximum of four stories and 65 feet with an FAR of 2.5. Chapter 7, the DSP, provides height and density bonus in exchange for provisions of containing public benefits or incentives. Developments seeking the incentive in the transitional district are permitted a maximum of six stories, 95 feet, and FAR of 3.0. The project's height is five stories, 70 feet, with an FAR of 2.8, which does exceed the by-right standards. However, the project is eligible for incentives because its hotel is one of the incentives in the downtown specific plan, and that would allow them to go for six stories, 95 feet, with a 3.0 FAR. And the project is designed currently within these standards. The city's principal urban designer reviewed the stage one and stage two submission and supports its approval. Staff believes that the findings for the parking reduction permit of six spaces and variance for not providing one loading space can be made, and recommends that the City Council approve the parking reduction, variance, and combined stage one and two final design submission. That concludes my presentation. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Project Atkins, Representative Mr. Khan. Thank you.
Let me ask you, just to be sure, so basically, it's within all of the guidelines, the only difference is the, the six spaces and the loading.
Correct, yeah. In terms of the zoning, yeah.
Everything else fits.
Yes, sir.
And what is the loading, and this is going to sound like a really ignorant question, what is the loading used for in a hotel like this?
I believe it would be used, for instance, if you had a restaurant or off-site laundry facilities, that sort of thing. So if you had to have multiple, like deliveries for food services or that, you know, like if you had a restaurant or large bank facility, that sort of thing.
So then I'll ask Mr. Khan or someone from the project to discuss how they're going to load their laundry or whatever they need to load without the space.
This, the proposed project currently does not have any kind of restaurants as part of the design, also.
They have laundry, I'm sure.
They do have laundry onsite, correct.
They have, I mean, they have laundry facilities onsite. Maybe they can talk about whether they ever load anything else and what they'll do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you take public testimony...
I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, City Council, City staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are on Brand Boulevard here in the City of Glendale. Councilmember Friedman, as part of my presentation, I'll address that issue. Recently, as was pointed out, our downtown specific plan area has seen quite a number of projects, and most of those projects are residential apartment buildings. And so what we are proposing here today is something different. It's a new business-class hotel on the site. We are taking what is a very unique-shaped lot, an L-shaped lot, that currently has a vacant restaurant building on it and a surface-level parking lot that's directly south of the Americana at Brand, and we are transforming that into a much-needed hotel in our downtown area. The hotel has a number of positive benefits to the city, to the residents, and to the visitors coming to the city. Our architect will walk you through the design and the amenities. What I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the significant economic benefits that a business-class hotel actually offers. As part of your staff report on page 5, under fiscal impacts, first of all, our project is 100% privately funded. We own the land. The construction financing is available now for our project. In addition to the hundreds of thousands of dollars this project will pay to be constructed, it will also generate a minimum of $250,000 in transient occupancy taxes per year. The owner and operator of this franchise is Vista Investments, led by Mr. Juan Yaca. Mr. Yaca also, and his companies, own the Vagabond Inn, which is to the west of this site. They also own a number of other hotels and operate other hotels throughout the state of California. The Hampton Inn and Suites is part of the Hilton Worldwide Hotel family, which is a significant thing to say. The Hilton Worldwide has already approved the franchise application for this location... The Hilton Worldwide has already approved the franchise application for this location, and we've provided a letter to that as well. I have copies of that letter I can circulate after I speak for your records. To address Councilmember Friedman's comments, as it relates to the loading space or how the hotel actually functions, first of all, as was pointed out by Mr. Kraus, the restaurant is not a restaurant for the public. It is only open for breakfast for the residents, and it's small and it's ancillary items that are offered for that breakfast. So it's not prepared food in terms of a chef preparing your meal. The reason I say that is, is because we will not have deliveries for food that you typically see coming to restaurants. The second thing is, is that the laundry facilities, as was already pointed out, the laundry is all done onsite. And if you can see on our plan, it shows a laundry area to have that as well. Thus, from our perspective, we did not want to have to include a loading space that, one, would not be used, and, two, in terms of this site and its configuration, would eat up a lot of space that we actually need for functioning, for parking, and for the rooms themselves. The deliveries that come to the facility, I was told, in terms of deliveries, they have one formal delivery in a box truck, so it's not a large truck, that happens once a week. They also occasionally have UPS and FedEx that will deliver as well. So there's not a high demand of deliveries as it relates to this facility needing that. Finally, what else was pointed out in terms of the parking, right now, as was pointed out, Mr. Yaca owns the Vagabond Inn. That facility has 52 rooms with 42 parking spaces. They've owned that for many years. It's been very successful. It's run professionally, and though that number of parking spaces is sufficient for that number of rooms. If you translate it to this project, we actually far exceed the number of parking spaces as it relates to these rooms and the number of spaces we're providing. Those are my comments that I'd like to make. I'd like to turn it over to our architect, and he'll walk you through the project, unless you guys have any questions to make.
No.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, Tom Shea, Tagawa Smith, Martin, we are the architects for this project. I'd like to back up a little bit from the slide and maybe just start, I've always wanted to start with kind of the big, big picture, and before we get into the detail, I think it's helpful to understand the project. As Rodney and already described the project, we are at the corner of Colorado and Brand. This is a view of our project from the corner. As you can see, the entry is off of Colorado, the garage entry off of Brand, and our project is five stories tall. We are pretty challenged here in terms of the site, and as Rodney showed, it's kind of an L site. There's limited frontage on each side, but I think this is an exciting program, an exciting location, and I think we were able to resolve all the technical issues, working with the staff and the different departments in terms of building and fire safety and that sort of thing. So very quick look from the entry. This is our main entry piece, driveway entry into the parking, kind of a lobby that's larger and taller to kind of attract the visitors into, into the entry lobby, as well as opening up this business to create the sidewalk pedestrian experience. On the backside, this is off of Brand, another garage entry. We've kind of treated this facade not as a backdoor, but also articulated. We've got benches and landscaping in front as well. This is the site plan again, the L configuration, so our entry is over here, another entry to the garage is over here, and overall, we've kind of taken this space on the podium to create our amenities deck, which I will show you a little bit later. I think I just wanted to have everybody kind of understand the overall section is essentially a garage that comes in from, from Brand, another garage entry that comes in from Colorado, and then four levels of hotel rooms on top. As mentioned, the height is as per the staff report. Okay, so on the first floor, what we've done is create a lobby here off of Colorado. On the landscape plan in your package, you'll see how we try to tie this into the adjacent property to kind of create a cohesive open space in here. The driveway comes in, it basically ramps up a little bit and stays at this level, so it does not continue or loop around. This is, this is the first level driveway. Another parallel driveway comes in from this side below and goes down and goes into those underground. As visitors come in, we have a check-in desk, and we have a lobby, or lobby and an elevator that takes them up to the amenities floor. So when they come out of this floor, here's the elevator, they have this open double-volume space. This is part of where Rodney talked about in terms of food. This is only for the people that stay here. This is kind of a lounge area where they can also come outside where we're providing a deck and a pool. And some back of the house functions are some fitness rooms, and Rodney mentioned the laundry room is located over here in the back of the house as well. And in terms of the rest of the building, we've got Kings Studios and Queens that are basically kind of laid out around this courtyard to enjoy the view to the mountains, enjoying the view to the downtown, also a view out this way and get a little glimpse of the mountains. Here's some in your package as well, just some sizes and how the rooms lay out. And the elevations, I wanted to kind of say that, you know, we play with the colors, we play with the massing, we play with the material. The intent here was to create something that doesn't stand out too much, but fits in and fits in well, trying to get the scale down, sort of have articulations. We kind of thought this was an interesting approach at the sidewalk level in terms of scale and colors, and over here as well, along the, along the parking entry along Brand. And some of the materials that we will be using are bricks, bucko of varying colors. I will be using metal panels, and we'll be using siding, fiber cement siding for some of these top, top blue pieces, for instance, will be that. Some more look around the building. This is side elevation, this is the other side elevation. That concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the architect?
Yes, question?
Mr. Najarian?
Can you point out the signage again? Where is it and what's, is it going to be a neon or is it going to be a backlit or? What do you propose?
Yeah, we, what we, we're looking at is opportunities where we have wall services to incorporate signage. We are still working through with the staff on that, so this is what we call kind of a placeholder. We're not asking for this particular approval for the project, but we felt that in areas where, where there isn't any openings to be able to incorporate signage into the architecture. So, so we kind of have articulations here that becomes part of the sign, becomes part of the architecture.
But I believe as part of the DSP, there's a separate sign program. Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Weaver?
Will staff be allowing left-hand turn from Colorado into the structure? It's pretty close to Brand and heavy traffic street. I would think we'd be restricting left-hand turns. That's part one.
At this point, there are right turn in, right turn out.
Right turn in and out on Colorado.
That's right.
Right turn, but I'm asking about a left turn.
Left turn at this point, it's not, it's not.
Will that be written in, restricted, no left turn? You can't come west on Colorado, pass Brand, and make a left turn across two busy lanes?
We did have conversations with the city traffic division, and we're looking into ways to prevent them from being able to make a left-hand turn out of that driveway. Right now, Brand Boulevard is already restricted by the media and trying to figure out how we can restrict those kind of turns, left turns out onto Colorado as well.
Okay, the second question, second question, if you come, coming east on Colorado and you turn into the lot, the elevated lot, the podium, and you drive up, and there's no room, you've got to turn around, go down, go back out, and go around the corner and go down off the Brand one?
Correct.
Is there going to be any direction to projected guests or anything which parking level you should be on?
I'm going to turn that to Mr. Khan.
You see what I mean? They go up, they go around, they go down, around, down.
We have had discussions about how to deal with that issue as well, and I think they might have come up with some sort of solution.
I just haven't seen it.
And, and the council is by all means able to add a condition that the, the parking will be so pre-designated such that there will not be an overflow, and the guests will know ahead of time where to park, so that that problem will.
You make a reservation there, and it tells you where the entrance to the parking structure is depending on.
Yes. The council by all means could put that condition in.
Okay, I'd love that.
Anybody else? All right, well, I am.
Well, you're making comments now?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll make a couple of comments. Just the frustration, that corner that those people won't sell and haven't sold, it's no different than the diagonal corner that sitting as a vacant lot in just about my entire Someday, somewhere, the owner of that parcel in the corner there is going to pass on to his great reward. Somebody is going to buy it, then they're going to put up a building that will block the view of that hotel to the north and to the east. It's just one of those things. I call it hodgepodge development, but what choice do you have? You can't get the person to sell and make a nice project out of it. It's too bad. Other than that, the colors, I guess my colleagues will like the colors better because they're darker. I see the other architect's still here. Maybe he's taking notes on the colorations that are darker and, I mean, I'm not much into color. I like Spanish tile design, and that's not Glendale, California anymore, even though it's the home of the Verdugos. But it's okay. You can only do so much with that project, with that design, the width on Colorado and stuff. He did the best he could, as far as I can tell.
Mr. Najarian?
I just want to make sure that the, the check-in to the lobby is sufficiently within the driveway, so it doesn't cause any backup onto Colorado. And I know, I mean, that's just a comment. I want to make sure that, let's say, two guests arrive at the same time, that there's not a, a traffic jam spilling out to Colorado. Mr. Weaver brought up the issue of a future development on that corner spot, and it would be very unfortunate if, oh, well, I mean, we want something to happen there, but it may be unfortunate for the corner if all of a sudden his views are, are gone. Let's see, we talked about signage. Is there a, is there an entrance to the Vagabond Inn off of, what's the street just south of Colorado?
Elk.
Elk. Is there an entrance off of Elk?
There's, yes, it goes all the way to the freeway.
In the event, in the event that there is a full parking condition at that hotel, at the Hampton, would the management make temporary parking available at the Vagabond so that the guests aren't lost in the city trying to look for, for parking?
Councilmember Najarian, the short answer is yes, but what we could also do is if we think that there would be overflow for a special event or some function, then we could also have valet parking where we could stack the cars on our site if we needed to. That could provide additional parking as well. If I can go back just real quickly, two items. One is you mentioned about the, the people, the hotel check-in. We will have two of our parking spaces closest to the office check-in that are non-handicap parking spaces that will be designated for people checking in and out. So they won't be queuing on Colorado Street. Everything will be on our site. The second thing I just wanted to mention to maybe alleviate Mr. Weaver's fear about the parking and how people are going to find the additional parking, we're doing two things. One is an electronic parking monitoring system, and you kind of see that now at the Americana when you drive into a certain level, and it will show you it has 10 parking spaces or two parking spaces or 100 parking spaces. We would do the same thing. What we would also do is have signs onsite that show how to get to the other parking level as it relates to Colorado Street and on Brand.
Okay, but if you're going east on Colorado, you turn in, it's not till you turn into that parking, upper parking, that you'll see the sign that says 100% full. You're still going to have to turn around, go back out, because you're not going to be able to, I doubt if we'll allow you to put a neon light out on the sidewalk to direct it. Now, maybe that's how you're going to do it, but I don't see how it'll be alleviated just by putting that after you get in. At the Americana, you see 100% floor filled on the second or third, and you go to the next, you just keep spiraling up. That's not the condition you have here. Understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, and if I'm right, off of Colorado, that's a slope upward, that driveway's soaping upward.
Yes, you're coming up on Colorado, and you're going down on Brand.
So when you're coming up, then it's the first two spaces up on top. They were loaded, you could drive further in up there to park, to register.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to support the variances or the project at this time. I just think that, for the same reason that they mentioned, I think it's too early. I think something should be done for that whole location, for that whole site. And in general, I'm hesitant about granting variances, so if we bring the project in within the allowed code, that's fine, but I'm not going to vote for a variance or parking permit, so, sorry.
Okay, anything? All right, I am very supportive of this project, and every time I drive by, I remember, and probably Mr. Weaver remembers and a few other people, how excited, and Mr. Manukian, how excited Glendale was when that Chinese restaurant opened.
Yes, and I miss it.
That was the biggest thing in the world. What was it called? I forget.
Gourmet.
Gourmet, gourmet 88.
In Burbank, is it?
Right, how could I forget? But that was just the biggest thing in the world, and we'd go there for lunch, and it was, I had black hair and a lot of it.
You go back that far?
But at the end of.
Built in the forties.
At the end of that run, it's been completely and utterly empty the entire time. We've actually had issues there. I know with homeless people, it's been sort of a taxi stand. It's just been a horrible situation. So I was very happy when it was purchased. Unfortunately, the owner of that commercial property, who happens to be a friend of mine, is not interested in selling, won't be interested in selling. His children, when they inherit the property, will continue to operate that, that business. And, and perhaps, you know, they will upgrade the facade and maybe bring in a new category of businesses there. But this particular use, I think, is fantastic. The fact that it's a Hilton product, I think, is great because that means a business usage for people that are visiting the Americana, whether they're from Bloomingdale's or Nordstrom's or the Galleria people. I think this is going to be a 100% occupancy with all of the business travel, and I assume there'll be some, some pleasure travelers also. I like the idea that it's a Suites, an all Suites hotel. That's the latest trend in, in hotels. And after hearing so many presentations from. And after hearing so many presentations from so many hotel products, quite frankly, I think we're going to do, the city's going to do a lot better than 250,000 in terms of the TOT. I think this, this is going to be a big hit. Certainly, Mr. Caruso's excited about it since he knows that it will help his development. So I'm very happy. I think the, the loading is certainly not particularly needed, and so I'm looking forward to having this built as soon as possible and having the, the TOT start to flow into the city coffers, as well as having this kind of builds up our, this is in South Glendale. Colorado seems to be the magic, the magic street. Everything south of Colorado is technically called South Glendale. I shouldn't say technically, is, is sort of commonly called South Glendale, and this is a great project for the area, as well as employment, obviously, for the people that are going to work there.
We turned that in, didn't we add that to Downtown Specific Plan?
Right.
That area, for this reason. You know, now there's something, it's going to happen, I'd be willing to bet the people that come out on Brand, they can only turn right. They want to get on the, on the 5 freeway, they're going to have to go down to Los Feliz and go by that other one they're going to build down there after the traffic to get to the 5.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. Can I do them all together?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of items, closing the public hearing, but also, there was a suggestion of adding a condition to the parking exception, and I don't know whether that's still the council's pleasure, but...
I'd like that.
That would be...
No left turns.
Well, it was actually pertaining to another issue, and that was having information on the reservation confirmation concerning the location of the parking. So what I drafted, if this hopefully meets the intent, is that the developer shall ensure that the reservation confirmation includes information about the location of the hotel parking entrance and registration desk. Well, it's the entrance for that particular person, because it's not just where the two entrances are, it's assigning them to one entrance or another, so it needs to be specific to say that. And also the no-left turn, at least during certain hours, at the very least.
Now, if they enter on Brand and go down, then they're going to have to have instructions inside where the lobby is, one floor up, get to the lobby. But they'll work all that stuff out.
I believe we have the intent for those conditions.
Okay. With those additions, if they're okay, can I move all four of them? I'll move 2, A, B, C, and D.
Second. Roll call. Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero? Yes. Thank you very much. What's next? Sure.
So moved.
We are adjourned. I think we have to now do...
There is one, one more meeting after this.
Very short report.